Okay. I have a quarrel now, so we can continue with our next presentation. And I think it's you, Chief, right?
Yes, ma'am. I'm next on the list. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Madam President, council members. I know Jan is bringing up the presentation now, so I'll just begin by saying thank you for being here and welcome to the 2122 proposed budget for the Renton Police Department. I know you have budget books in front of you with accomplishments and goals, so I want to try and give an overview of what the services we're providing, what we're doing with our money, and some of the things that we're going to continue to do. I added a few things in recent months. As you can imagine, we've gotten a lot of attention as far as budget and processes, so I want to touch on some of that, but I added some of the questions or some of the things that had popped up in the questioning with the community I had added to some of these slides. So it probably won't be a lot like some of the other presentations because I wanted to highlight some of the good stuff that we're doing that's not in your book. But of course, I will get through this and I'm sure I have plenty of questions, so I will get to that. Let me see. Jan, do you have this? It's got slides and notes on it.
Are you not seeing the slide show?
I guess I would ask the council if they're seeing just the slide or the next slide.
Oh, next slide as well. We're seeing your notes as well, Chief.
Okay. They're not a secret, and I'm not trying to hide those from you, but I also, there's a way we could take care of that. Anyways, just moving on while we're correcting that, the Renton Police Department's mission has been and continues to be working together to provide professional and unbiased law enforcement services to our community. We created that as a staff probably five, six years ago. Every few years, we kind of go back through and oversee or look at what our mission, vision, and our core values are and to make sure they fit both with us, our community, and the times that we're in. Perfect. That looks good, Jan.
Thank you.
Nope, that's quite all right. Next slide, please, now that you got there. Okay, this next slide is our organization chart. We are slotted for 163.4 full-time employees. We currently are down nine. Those are illustrated by that bottom row. I've broken it down by divisions. We have six divisions within the Police Department: Patrol Services, which is our traffic, animal control, parking enforcement, Special Operations. These are our undercover narcotics, DED, Directed Enforcement Team, which are the bikes that the businesses might see downtown, and they do special code enforcement collaboration with CED. Administrative Services, our front counter that holds the records and processing all the reports, concealed pistol licenses and such. Patrol Operations, you'll see at 66. We currently have the SROs that are not in school in patrol operations so that we are fully complemented. That's our backbone to law enforcement is then people that respond to 911, not taking away from any of the other amazing services we have. Investigations, those are detectives and evidence technicians that process the evidence, and Staff Services. That, oh, I'm sorry, Staff Services is our front counter that handles our records and CPLs, weapons, things like that. Administrative Services, I'm sorry, I know they're listening, that is their control of our school resource officers, community programs, all of our training, our hiring, retention, and all the recruitment. So that's our administrative services. Those positions that are frozen are selected in those specific areas so that we can keep patrol operations going while we tighten our belt and make it through this COVID that's affected everybody, every department. Next slide, please. This is kind of an overall. People were curious about where the money in the police budget goes. Our 2122 proposed budget is about $42.5 million in 2021, and this is something that we have on our website. Later, I'll talk about transparency and putting things out for the community to absorb and digest. This is one of those things. On the website, you can hover over one of the specialty columns on the right, and it tells you what that might be. It doesn't do that on the PowerPoint slide, sorry, but this is just kind of a basic overview of what the police budget looks like. Most of it, of course, as you know, is operational. Next slide, please. Personnel costs, that is the bulk of our budget. That's 61%. That is our budget for benefits, salaries, and overtime, and that takes up the bulk of the money that we're lucky enough to get. Next slide, please. Other services makes up for 22%, and the biggest bulk items from there are our SCORE, jail facility of $6.5 million, and Valley Communications, which is almost $2.8 million. The remaining 17% that's left in the budget is for interfund transfers. That's for our IT services, computers, facilities, the facilities, you know, all the new desks and doors, windows, everything, and then our shops to keep our vehicles running in all the streets. We also have a contract with the Harbor Patrol, that's Mercer Island, that protects our shores during the summer times, or actually all the time, but mostly they're busiest in the summer when all the boats are out there. Sorry, Jan. Next slide, please. I wanted to break this down service by the numbers using 2019. The first one is patrol. We answer over 80,000 calls for service in a year. That's either a 911 call or an officer seeing something or a traffic stop, collision, could be any of those, but over 80,000 calls for service. We have maintained over 80,000 for at least the last three years. Investigations, they have, these are combined numbers, these are kind of, might be confusing, but 1,200 cases assigned. Those are cases assigned for them to work and investigate. There's over 1,200 cases that are assigned as information because they're lacking suspect information. Somebody dinked my mailbox, and you know, so it's just information that we can't do anything to follow up on. They are assigned those to review as well. Then our evidence technicians have entered over 5,200 pieces of evidence items, both here at the City Hall and up at the maintenance shops. Administrative Services, while in charge of community programs, school resource officers and training, they are also our recruitment and testers for new employees. So as an example, to show you the numbers, 456 applicants tested for Renton last year, 384 passed. In the end, we conducted 53 interviews and hired four. It'll be a little bit different this year based on COVID. We had to change all these in-person interviews to virtual Zoom, and we're just now recently attempting, they've been going perfectly, but to kind of broaden, and I'll get into that as far as equity and inclusion, how we're broadening our search for applicants. Patrol Services, traffic, animal control, and parking enforcement, they handled over 1,100 collisions. Animal complaints, a lot of people don't know that. Traffic complaints and animal complaints make up a bulk of the complaints that we receive in the Police Department. So over 4,800 animal complaints, 5,500 parking citations, 1,900 abandoned vehicles, and 260 vehicles unfortunately were towed. Next slide, please. I put community programs down as a separate, as their own individual slide. This has been a conscious effort by the Police Department to engage the community. We've always had community programs that have worked with businesses and worked with neighborhoods. We work in coordination with Kelly's Group in neighborhoods and getting the police involved in non-law enforcement, traditional call line 111, but to engage in the community. So our community programs have done a heavy lift over the last two years, three wonderful women that worked there, and I just wanted to put out some of these stats. These are just a very small portion of what they're doing, but it does show you the focus and the concentration we've tried to put on engaging our community, and a lot of these ideas came straight from them. But our social media, I put, there's been a 17% to 72% increase in followers since we started, you know, all of our social media. Facebook has over 75,000 followers, Twitter 14.9. These numbers just continue to increase. I get a daily sheet or monthly sheet of how many new people we receive each month or people that are following. Shop with a Cop, this was a wonderful program we've done the last couple of years, and we're trying to tailor it, but I bring this up because it was in coordination with communities and communities in schools of Renton. Sorry. They provide us families. We sponsored 15 families. We had a total of 77 community members that volunteered and lots of donations that raised $10,250, where we're able to go out, went to Target early in the morning, and we went and shopped for those families, the entire family, not just the kids, parents, and we shopped with the kids so we can provide a good Christmas and a good holiday season for those families. Stephanie Eyes is working her magic to try and find a way that we can do that this year as well, whether it's a drive-through or something, because we can't meet in person, but we're going to get this done so that we can still, you know, engage those kids. Total child ID cards, this was really popular. Most of our events that we do during the summer, we would do fingerprints. Parents want to have their children fingerprinted. So the child ID cards last year totaled 1270, over 1,000, you know, parents volunteer their kids to get their fingerprints taken. So we haven't been able to do that, but that's something that goes with those community engagement programs that we're hoping to get back up somehow at some time. Community Police Academy, we have, is very popular, and we have one of the best. 28 community members last year graduated through the 10-week academy. There was also an advanced academy, so Stephanie is already making plans to have a virtual academy so that we can invite folks that can come in, go through these virtual classes just as they would in person, and then we're also tailoring one with the help of one of our forefront, you know, community engagement, one of our leaders, Sergeant John O'Wine, to make one in Spanish so that we can reach the Hispanic community that serves in Renton. Red Ribbon Week, this is a poster contest. It was initiated by the DEA or Drug Enforcement Agency as far as drug awareness in schools. This happens at the elementary school level where classes, they take on a school project or a classroom project where they paint a picture that has some type of drug enforcement theme or law enforcement theme, and then they're posted online and they're evaluated and graded, and you get a first, second, third place prize. We do a video that we put on our social media, and then we go and visit the class, whether it's an ice cream social or provide gift bags for the kids or something like that. But last year, 583 students had participated. So the service by numbers with community programs, they do so much more. This is a snapshot, but this is a real big effort for us to try and engage our community through different means. So, next slide, please. Continuing with the service, Staff Services, these are our front counter rock stars. They have processed over 3,900 public records last year. Those, I don't see those ever going down as far as the number of records asked, requested. 16,000 case reports managed. That means officers have produced, you know, over 16,000 case reports, and they have to merge those into our systems and correct errors. Over 1,200 concealed pistol licenses they have to process. I thought this was interesting when I asked for some data, and it's just a sign of the times that I'll bring up. Weapons purchase applications, if you buy a weapon, you have to have it run saying that you can, you know, it's an authorized weapon to purchase. In 2019, we had 2,300 applications. This year already, we have over 3,600 applications. It's a disturbing trend, but it is a trend. Special Operations, this has specialized enforcement team and a directed enforcement team. These are our undercover narcotics and our bike units. They have served, arrested, excuse me, 23 CSAM arrests. That's the commercial sexual abuse of a minor. These are sting operations that we perform through online ads and things like that where we set up in a hotel somewhere, and we end up arresting those that are soliciting minors for sex. 115 cases have been filed through this unit, 46 search warrants were served and written, and they've seized over $5.8 million worth of drugs and made 33 arrests. Training hours performed, going back to our admin services, this is, you know, officers, everybody in the Police Department requires a minimum amount of hours, which we typically will exceed. Last year, our commissioned officers received combined over 12,000, almost 12,300 hours, non-commissioned over 1,000 hours. Next slide, please. Seizure forfeiture, this was something that I wanted to bring up, that there was a lot of discussion over what we can spend that money for. So I want to say that we are authorized to seize property and money that is used or are the proceeds of illegal transactions or narcotics. Our current balance is listed there, almost $650,000. When these seizures are forfeited and upon adjudication, we can only use those proceeds to expand and improve narcotics-related investigations. So it's not something that we can share with the general fund or anywhere else. It's got to be specific to expand and improve narcotics-related investigations. So we use that for training, to get people trained on new, you know, what's the most common drug that's going on out there? The, forgive me, fentanyl. Fentanyl is finding its way in different venues and different drugs, so this is a good example of what we might spend that money for, is to send our folks to training with, whether it's the DEA or ATF or somebody that has training on specific trends or anything like that that has to do with fentanyl or any kind of new drug that's threatening our community. Forensic computers and softwares, this is trapping cell phones and getting different information so we can elicit data from those, and equipment. We have a trailer that we tow that we can plant, do a marijuana warrant and put all the, you know, evidence and everything in the back of the trailer. Vehicles for narcotics detectives, they have to rent or lease these vehicles so that they could switch off the vehicle. So if they are tailing somebody or trailing somebody, it's not the same car all the time. They have to rotate these vehicles so they're different in appearance. Next slide, please. Electronic home detention, these are a couple of, another of our all-stars, Kenny in Georgia that work in electronic home detention. This is a program that provides an alternative to incarceration for non-violent offenders. Last year, they had 43, 432 individual clients that were serviced through EHD, serving over 29,000 days with an average daily population of 81. How someone gets to, this isn't an alternative to incarceration. This happens with the approval of the sentencing court. Offenders are placed in the EHD program at no cost to the agency. The EHD program eliminates the expenses to house inmates out of jail, so that's where the savings would come in. The costs are paid for by the offender, and we currently perform these duties for not just Renton, but Auburn, Burien, Des Moines, Normandy Park, Tuckwilla, and SeaTac. So we're kind of, we're helping a lot of people with this program. This electronic home detention enables individuals to continue working, attend court appearances, address family concerns, and fulfill other responsibilities. So not everybody has this. We're lucky that Renton has this, and it's been crazy popular and very successful. So I, my hat's off to Kenny in Georgia for doing 432 individual clients. Next slide, please. Business plan, I wanted to go directly to some of the things that address business plan, like provide a safe, healthy, vibrant community, promoting through effective communication and service delivery. With, even with some of the shortages that I talked about with our staffing levels, we're going to maintain every service. Renton is known for its great service and full service with animal control, parking enforcement, our detectives, bike unit, specialized enforcement team, doing narcotics. You know, we are a full-service team, and we're going to maintain all those things despite the challenges that we have. Community engagement overdrive, I spoke just briefly about how much our community programs folks are doing, but with COVID and reaching out to a community that's asking questions and deserving of answers, we need to have more engagements, and so we're in the process of developing those, and I'll get to those in just a minute. But community engagement overdrive is key, and we just have a fantastic team that is more than willing to the, more than willing to accept that challenge, and I think they're, we're already delivering on some fantastic promises. So. Business support and collaboration, we have a good relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. We have a good relationship with our downtown businesses through DED, our bike units, and just regular patrol officers stopping by and saying hello to have those communications and discussions. This is going to continue, you know, as far as metrics are concerned, when you look at law enforcement, it's not how many tickets you write, it's not how many people you arrest, it's the victims that you've assisted, it's the confirmation or information flow between victims and the Police Department, and it's business follow-up, you know, answering questions and making yourself available. So we will continue. Sandra Haplick is in our community programs. She's our business rep, and she continues to make these engagements and allow us to have conversations with businesses. Transparency, showed you earlier a pie chart that we have. That is on our website. As a result of all the changes and as we looked internally as far as how we are communicating with our community, transparency was a big one. So we put all of our policies online, used to force data online, anything that we have that might be of question, the budget, the budget items, you know, where the money goes, all those things we've placed on our website. And luckily, it's one of those things where we can have two-way communication. If we can make it easier or more illustrative, we can do that. So that was one of those things as far as being transparent as a law enforcement agency. Next slide, please. Business plan, building an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic, and racial justice. There's a lot of things going on, things that we've done in the past that have set us up to be successful, but there's still a lot of work that we have to do. The inclusive and diverse working groups that we have with Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, with the RAP group, these are things in place that gave us a really good head start versus some other agencies that might be trying to figure out how do they communicate to, you know, our community as a whole, especially in the minority communities. So we're starting with, I put old and new, because that's where we started with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force and the RAP group as our, as our group that we already had in place to have some questions and to find out what was going on, what were some of the questions, what are some of the concerns they have specifically to law enforcement. I put new because my hope is, as I say, I put down forums, they're down there. As we start to engage the community through initially the polling, just to get a baseline of what is of concern to people or what are they interested in talking about, old and new means that we hope to create new relationships and new committees or panels so that we can have these discussions, not just once or twice, but ongoing discussions so that we can look at policy discussion and review. Now, as we create these forums, which are in place right now, I have a, I think I'm being said to speak to the Filipino community in a month, but to have these discussions and hopefully somebody or something from there is, somebody that wants to be a part of, you know, a new panel as we look at what the Police Department is and how we're going to communicate, we can have these meetings, hey, what do you see as a successful way to be, to earn the trust and legitimacy within the community? So we're hoping to have these discussions through these forums and have some discussions over our policy and our reviews to create new relationships and possibly new groups that we can have on a more consistent basis to have this communication as things come up. Recruitment, that's another one that, you know, we have a goal of equity inclusion efforts to make some changes, and recruitment is one of those things. The first thing we talked about, we sat down and talked about diversifying our recruitment. We have a lot of flyers, we have a lot of materials, and we have a lot of diversity within the city and within the department itself, is to use those folks on our flyers, on our materials to better represent those communities of color, the indigenous community. All those communities can be represented on some of our flyers, and then we can use the task force or, you know, a chief's advisory panel to reach out to those hard-to-reach areas and use those officers to do recruitment, but also to form that relationship to have the discussion. Another thing we wanted to do is create a larger applicant pool. This came after a discussion with Corey Jacobs from our, he's the Guild Vice President. So we sat down and we talked about how many people that we actually are able to interview based on staffing levels. We decided that, you know, we test the top 10 or top 20 folks that, hey, why don't we just put in some extra time and get a wider pool of 40 people? Let's interview 40 people in a week. So we wanted to broaden our ability to look at more people and talk with at the table as far as the interview process. So we just recently did that through our Zoom meetings. Instead of 20 folks, we interviewed 40. So this is something that we'll continue to do. I don't know, you know, we'll continue to do Zoom as long as we have to, but also the in-person groups, we'll just, we'll just set aside more time and have a larger pool of candidates to interview and to process. We want to utilize our specialty groups, continue to use our specialty groups to engage the minority communities, your RAP group, the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. I'm really interested in maybe a chief's advisory panel with community members with the goal of reviewing policy and procedures and improving communications. How do we reach out to a particular community? Not everybody has social media, you know, whether it's newspaper, it's radio. John O'Wine does a lot of radio spots. Just think out of the box and find out how we can communicate them in a better way that's easy for them to understand. We want to continue our city-sponsored and the city or state academy training as far as equity and inclusion, and also the divide between race and policing. They offer some pretty good training, but this is something that we need to continue. We just recently had our first round again of inclusion and equity training. This is something that we'll continue on an ongoing basis. So to maintain our training and find new opportunities through the state academy, I have no doubt that they'll be creating some new, some new training for us. Next slide, please. Reading service demands, providing high-quality customer service. We are going to maintain, I've already mentioned, the quality of service that we have. There's no plans right now to stop any of the services that you have supported, that you have allowed us to provide. We have a plan in place so that we can continue our 911 calls for service and each one of, each one of our specialty units, whether it's parking enforcement, animal controls, to maintain those and provide the same service. Build relationship with community and businesses. Again, that's one of my goals. It's not about how many tickets you write. It's really about the relationship you have with your community and building that trust and letting businesses know that you're looking out for them. Responsive to community, proactive with changes. 2020, like everybody else, has faced some incredible challenges, and this is just one of those, one of those years where we have to listen to our community. How do they see policing? How do they see their relationship with us? And, you know, with, we've had the, you know, Red Lion and some of these other issues that have popped up, and the community's asking us for guidance, and what are you doing about this and how are you helping? We got to be proactive with those challenges and reach out to them and say, hey, here's our plan. This is what we're going to do because your safety is our priority. The safety has always been the priority, and we will do what we need to make you feel safe. So, next slide, please. Looking forward, some of these are self-explanatory, but I want to reassure you, body cameras has been a big, big topic, and they would be fantastic to have. This is something that we have to look at the, and we do have things in place. You know, we have done a trial and error with a company, so we know which forum we would use or which format we would use. It's COBAN, which is the same as our N-DASH cameras in the cars that we currently have. So we have all the information and the process of how we would do those. We just have to look at the financial forecast and see how we can make that happen. So they, you know, we'll look at next year, and this is one of those things where I can be bringing forward some information that we already have, just freshen up the numbers and come back to this council and let you know where we're at with the body cameras. Legislation, this has been a big year for law enforcement and proposed legislation. My staff and I have been through a lot of the legislation that's being proposed and going forward, and honestly, a lot of it is something that we support. You know, if officer-involved shootings wouldn't be investigated by an independent body, that is something that would certainly take a load off of your detectives here in Renton. Just depends on how that looks. Like anything else, there's a lot of great ideas, but when you get to the details, what's it look like? But as far as accountability, we are for that, you know, decertifications, things like that that are going before legislation, bans on uses of force, those kind of things. There are things that we reviewed, and most things are things that we have supported, and we'll see what happens when they go through. Waspic is a great source or leader as far as where we should be going with our processes. So, mental health, this is something. We lost you, Chief. Are you muted?
Yeah, Chief, did you mute yourself?
I'm sorry. You just missed the best part of my presentation. I apologize. That would have brought the house down. The mental health, what I would say was, we are working with a state representative, Tina Orwal, with some legislation where the South County, that would be Renton, Tuckwilla, Kent, Auburn, Federal Way, so all of us in the South County area, all the chiefs, we speak once a week about coming up with a program and there'd be funding of some kind and what that would look like to have mental health professionals out with police and having dispatch centers respond, you know, dispatch mental health professionals to calls they think that might be appropriate, but certainly have us in a two-person type situation where they can help us and provide wraparound services for those individuals needing, needing mental health. Community court, I'm not going to take the court's thunder from this, but this is something that we had created or worked with them, and they had created, but a partnership as far as providing alternatives to sentences. And community court is something that we are 100% behind and have membership to where somebody can go to court, and instead of a sentence or anything like that, they sit before a judge and they have all these resources that are available to them, and as long as they accomplish those resources or those services or take those services and accomplish whatever that goal is, then that sentence might be, might disappear. So, community court is something we're looking forward to. It got put on hold due to COVID, but again, I think the court probably has a better explanation, but we're, we're with them 100%. So, next slide, please. And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, do you have any questions? Council member, Corwin.
Yes, thank you, President Perez. So yeah, I'm sure we have others too, but I'll just get started with, one of them that, a program that I've been proud of for a long time is the electronic home detention. detention. It's, you know, and Chief, you mentioned, great presentation overall, by the way, Chief. But you've mentioned some of the benefits, including that it is definitely a, a savings for taxpayers. But, but equally important, and I think you touched on this, is that it, it's a great alternative to keep people that maybe are first-time offenders or, as you said, non-violent offenders from sort of getting into a revolving door of engagement with their justice system. And I think in particular, it's really helpful for people that have substance abuse issues because we can, we can make, the judge can make it a requirement of electronic home detention that they seek treatment and this can allow them the latitude to get treatment. So it is, it is a good program and I think Renton has had to work hard to keep it going. I think we've managed it in different ways in the past, but we've had to keep driving forward. And in fact, I, I think there was a King Five news segment earlier this month about how King County is just managing the electronic home detention Monday through Friday during work hours and that generated a lot of concern. And I was wondering if, if we have that issue or are we budgeted to be able to provide 24/7, which is kind of what community expects?
We do. We do have that service because there, our folks are notified. I saw that, that story as well and did a quick comparison as far as what we provide versus what they're providing, there was a complete difference.
Good.
And we, we are able to, to be notified of any kind of violations regardless of the time.
Okay. It, it's really important because it's a, it's a great program and, and I commend you for, for keeping it up. And then I would like to, while I have the floor, I'd like to say, on the body cameras, we, we do want to make the body cameras available. So if anybody watching this, I don't want them to think, well, you know, our concern has just been the body cameras are expensive and we can't seem to find the money. I mean, they are expensive, equipping everybody will, will cost some money, but of equal concern is we, we want to make sure we have a way that we can manage all the data that we're collecting. And, and people have heard me say from the dais before that I really want to respect the privacy of the individuals the police come in contact with when we do that. I'm, in the age of the internet, what, what we don't want to have happen is have people just for fun go out and collect, make freedom of information requests and just get all the body camera footage from all the police officers all the time. Because police officers tend to be involved in, you know, they'll, they'll catch people at their worst during times of crisis, during, you know, times when things are really going bad for families and, and, you know, in various states of stress and so forth. And so we really have to have a way that when, when there is an event where everybody wants to see what the police officer saw, that they can get that information, but that they're not just trolling and collecting the data and putting it for fun or for, you know, for profit on the internet. And so I think the council really needs to spend some time working that and we really need to work with the state to make sure the state's helping us with that. But, but I do want to express my commitment and my gratitude that you're, you're working on it and, and we are committed to making it happen.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for bringing that up. That's been that big concern as far as people just requesting it because they're curious and the neighbor, you know, requesting it because the police went into the neighbor's house, you know, that kind of thing is, is still something that has to be worked out.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I have been really looking forward to this presentation this evening because, you know, policing and public safety are one of the, the primary responsibilities of good local government and I just really am so grateful for the work that you put into trying to make that presentation relevant and not just about numbers on a page, which, now I'm going to ask about a number. So 80,000 calls for service is very impressive. That is a lot of, that is a very large body of work when you look at all of the other things that you're responsible for in terms of the community outreach and all of, you know, as we were talking about public records requests. So looking at your overall budget of 42.5 million, if we were to break that down per call, and I was doing it, works out to, you know, 500 and some change for each of them. I'm wondering, how does that number relate to other police agencies locally and that's something that you can answer offline?
That's something I can research and find out. It's easy enough to contact ValleyCom and find out what our neighboring agencies, what their call, their call load is. I think we are up there, I would believe Kent might be the highest, but I can get some, some solid numbers where you're at.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Chief, again, great job. So back real quick on the issue of body cameras, do we, I know a number of our Valley City colleagues are doing body cameras, Kent, Tukwila, I heard the City of Pacific's looking at it. What are they doing to overcome that issue on public records that maybe we could look into or learn from? In fact, I believe Tukwila was the first city in our area that kind of do body cameras. Is there any best practices that we could be learning from our colleagues?
Yes, sir. We, we have been in communication. The biggest thing, as was mentioned, was the, the data, the data collection and how they've overcome it. Usually it's a request for staff and that's our biggest push would be if one person has to sit for 45 minutes to redact a video, that takes that one person away for 45 minutes from, from other work. So the, the biggest challenges folks have had is the data storage and the redaction process. It's very, very time-consuming. So there's been the request for additional personnel, which we've built into what we, what we would propose as additional staff at the front counter to provide that. In addition, we spoke with the IT and the City Attorney's Office who would need additional folks. The city attorney, it's funny, if we watch a video, the front counter would have to watch, redact it, then the prosecutor would have to watch and redact it. So it has to be viewed three times before it even gets to court. So there's a lot of time in there, but to your point, Kent has it, Tukwila has it and I, we'll check with Deputy Chief Keys. He's, he's been our, our frontrunner on the body cameras, but we can check to see what kind of problems they have after having it for a year and, and see what, you know, how they've overcome those things. I, I would also add on to that, Chief, sorry about Council President. I'd want to find out, since Pacific is looking at it and they're significantly smaller than we are, what resources they're bringing to bear? Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Council President. Again, thank you, Chief, for the presentation and all the stuff, all the, the work that you do, you and your team from, you know, really just being ahead of the curve on this. And it, it's, I don't tend to give a lot of praise because I don't, I, I just, you know, I'm not all about good words and praise this and that, I just, you know, but the work that you guys have done is phenomenal. And I was going to ask about the body cameras because as an attorney, privacy is a huge thing and I'm very thankful that Councilmember Prince asked that. I very much appreciate your work with the mental health court. It's very equitable when we talk about electric home monitoring because folks are still able to go and do their work, employment, and then continue that. And for our communities here, we have huge population, as, you know, we all know, that are working families and, you know, that they're able to continue that with electronic home monitoring. So thank you so much for all the work that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Councilmember McEvin.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Chief.
Councilmember McEvin, do you have a question?
My colleagues, of course, I'm most interested in this looking forward slide that you have, but I want to try to.
Can you repeat your question? Can you repeat your question, Councilmember?
I can try without video, is that better?
A little bit.
Little digitized, but I think I can hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, do you want me to, why don't you come back to?
Okay, I will. Council, Chief, again, thank you very much for your presentation. I, I, I very much appreciate the fact that you guys are working with Representative Tina Orwell, that again, we're one of the cities that is willing to work with the state representative to work on the mental health issue. I read the whole plan and I think it's fantastic. And, and you know, I, I, now that the legislative priorities are going to come to us, I think it's, it's one of those things that, that we can add, where the, the city can, can prioritize to work and help Representative Tina Orwell to finalize the details on, on, on these, on these proposals because I think it's, it's fascinating, the approach and, and kudos to you guys for working with the legislature in, in this, in this area. Now, Councilmember McEvin is back.
Yeah, I'll try again. I don't have video capability, so I do apologize for that. Is this better?
This sounds great, sir.
Fantastic. I think my question more or less got asked, but I, I just want to go back to that looking forward slide, just to really understand where these are as far as priorities. Is this, are these all things we're going to try to do during next budget cycle? Or are we too ambitious to call them goals? I just want to understand where they fit in the timeline and I know that's a little hard to nail down on some of them.
Yeah, this would, you know, this was something I wanted, that went, well, we're counting on two things, sir, sorry, and that is the, the privacy issues that Councilmember Corman had kind of discussed that we're looking at and the staffing levels is to get, you know, find out what are, what's going on with our neighbors and how, how bad of a workload it is. But I can see as, as the financial projections go and this is something where we can get more staff for our front counter and the laws as far as, because that's going to be up as well as far as Privacy Act and, and redaction and who can ask for what. It's going to be a combination of those things, but i- if I'm able to, the first opportunity, if it's within the next year, I would come to the council and say, here, here's where we at. This is, this is some of the things that have changed since we last discussed, whether it's legislation, privacy issues, funding, whatever it might be. But at the first opportunity, this will be one of those priorities that, it'll be one of the first things I bring to the council. Once, once we take care of some of those privacy issues, redaction and our budget forecast is more well-known. Because like you said, it, you don't want to put money on a, on a safety issue, so we won't, but we will certainly take a look at how we're going to, you know, pay for that. Recently, we've talked about if there's any grants available, some of the council members had kind of solicited, hey, what's out there that might help us purchase these? So we're looking at those as well. So I'd say within the next year, sir, I mean, definitely within the next year, you'll hear from me again about where we are at, but I'm waiting for that combination before we can pull the trigger, purchase those.
Great, thanks, Chief. And, and with respect to the other items on there too, as far as the mental health response, like that's all built into this budget, those are all things that we're striving to achieve in this cycle.
Yes, sir. This is something that came up within the last few months that the King County Chiefs, or South County Chiefs and Representative Orwell thought that there was a need, some individual departments were looking at, you know, what it would cost to have a mental health professional, would it be successful? So we're, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, but this is something where we're looking at funding to kind of assist us in all going together on a group program where we can all share, you know, whatever it looks like, three or four mental health professionals that will service our, our communities.
That's fantastic. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McEvin. Yeah, this is a part that I really like about this pro, this program that Councilmember, that Representative Tina Orwell is presenting. So much needed for the legislature to help respond to mental health services that are so much needed that, at every level. So the fact that we are in the table, I'm, I'm very proud of that. Councilmember Benedetti.
This is a theme for me tonight because I think I've asked every person so far a question relating to this, which is that, you know, given that our opportunities for the same kinds of outreach that we were doing in 2019 are not going to be happening probably in the first eight or nine months of 2021, have we looked at what ways we can take this community engagement to an online environment? I'm thinking in particular, you mentioned that great poster event that you did in 2019 and I'm wondering if there's a way to, to work with the schools and turn that virtual?
Yes, ma'am. We have refocused our efforts on that virtual engagement. You know, we've already hosted plenty of meetings and discussions with the community, with the business ownership. This is, you know, the schools are not quite in session, but there's a proposal that we're looking at is reaching out and seeing if there's some way they can fit us into the, the curriculum. But we have been very successful in our engagements with, through the Zoom. Well, Zoom is just the platform, I'm not trying to endorse them, but it's just, it's just the one that we use where we've been engaging communities for different, different reasons. You know, we're using Nextdoor that reaches over a third of our population for neighborhoods. We're going to connect with Kelly's group in community services in the neighborhoods to reach out, to kind of help us with these discussions and law enforcement and practices. So every venue that we have, we're trying to commit that to some type of virtual engagement if, if we can. Some of the things like that shop with the comp, things where we're physically handing things over or benefiting folks, we still have those, but maybe we do the drive-through. It works for COVID testing and, and some of the other, you know, food donations. So how about we wrap these gifts and, and have them prepared for the families as they drive-through? So the virtual is definitely on our priority list of engagements and we're trying to tailor it to about every, besides calling 911, about every other asset that we have to meet folks.
Thank you. When you say that you're coordinating with Kelly, you mean with the, with the neighborhood programs, through the neighborhood programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Chief, I have a comment about the equity lens and the training for inclusion and diversity. Yesterday, we end up being on the news and in every single platform and in YouTube and there were many videos about an incident that happened in the Sikh temple. And if I, if I end up watching the Renton Police Department on TV or, or, or caught in a video, I could not be more proud of what I saw yesterday in every single platform. If there was, if they were, it was like a, a test for how we, how prepared we are to navigate into an environment that is very much cultural differences and different language. The language barrier was huge. And everything that I saw on, on video, I'm, I'm very proud. And one of the things that I am very proud also is that every single police officer in Renton were wearing a face mask while the community was not wearing a face mask at all and there were more than 50 people around, but they got, they, they, all of, all of the police department were wearing their face mask and they didn't even remove it for interviews. But this is exactly the example that I think we can, we, I am expecting always from a police officer. Someone that is very respectful, someone that understands the issues, but at the same time makes people feel confident and safety and they are not afraid of the department, but that they know that they are there to help them. So thank you for all the efforts and thank you for all the work that you guys are doing on that area.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, so Chief, again, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I come back to you, Jan.
Okay, our next, next presentation is from Shane Maloney for the City Attorney Department.
Yes, good evening, council. Let's go ahead and jump to the second slide. I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly as we're a little behind schedule and feel free to ask questions. You can interrupt me if you want or, or save questions for the end. We are using a baseline budget, so our staffing should look the same as what it looked like at our last budget time two years ago. Our department is broken out between civil staff and criminal staff or also, think of them as prosecution staff. We have four civil attorneys, if you include me. I don't, I don't think we include me in the, in the four civil attorneys and a, and a paralegal. And then on the prosecution side, we have four attorneys, including the chief prosecutor, and then four support staff, one paralegal and three legal assistants. And then we have an administrative assistant. One thing that we're doing to address the challenges of increased workload as the city grows and as the difficulties of COVID and otherwise bring on more work to our department, we're kind of using the administrative assistant position more as a, in a legal role, doing less traditional administrative work and more legal work. We had an opening in that position that we kept open for about six months. We've just filled it with one of our legal assistants who is qualified to assist us with more of our backlog of. who is qualified to assist us with more of our backlog of paralegal work. So, with that background, let's go ahead and jump onto the next slide. Okay. This just breaks down, it breaks down by city service area. I will say that our services really cover all of these service areas in one way or another. Our civil legal advice team supports all divisions. So, all of the programs that come to you and that have been talked about in the budget so far, maybe not all of them, but many of them do have the benefit of our support and assistance in making sure that things are legally done, making sure that all of the legal tools that staff needs are available. And there's obviously some crossover between service areas as well. I mean, safety and health provides a livable community when you're thinking about prosecution or police work, for that matter. Okay, and I just say that our budget is nearly all staffing costs. We have very little. We have some legal research budgets, some supplies budget, and there's not much beyond that. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. Real quick, this is just a picture of our team as it was before we had a couple vacancies open up this year. Again, I mentioned we kept those open. We have two vacancies right now that we're just now starting to fill. But this is the team that helps us accomplish what we do. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about the business plan. Again, I think that we support all areas of the business plan. But on the civil side, again, we don't have our own program, so we're supporting, we're supporting our clients, achieve them. We keep that, we keep the business plan top of mind as we're providing our legal advice. But I'd say our prosecution team is more directly involved in a hands-on doing it itself. And I just want to take a second to kind of give you one example of how we, how our prosecution team accomplishes all of these elements of the business plan. Just in one example, and it just kind of start with, we talk about the diversity of our community. We do have a lot of residents that don't speak English as a first language. And we believe that those individuals deserve access to equal justice. And when I'm talking about the individuals, I mean individuals from both the defendants and the victims and witnesses and everyone involved. So, despite the fact they may not speak English as their primary language, they're going to get the same level of service as someone who's a primary English speaker. And same level of service does not mean same amount of work on our end. There's substantially more work involved in order to provide the same level of service. We involve translators. It takes more time to communicate. And really, communication is what we do, both on the civil side and the prosecution side. But if you think about it, ultimately, if we are going to pursue a case to the end through a jury trial, it's our job to convince a jury, which is also made up of people from diverse backgrounds, as to what the facts are. And we need to understand those facts before we get to that point. So, there's a lot of work that goes into understanding circumstances when you're dealing. And it's not just English speaking. It's also, people from diverse backgrounds, you know, have different cultures that may take additional time to understand why they act the way they act. I don't want to go too far into that, but our most common situation that I can think of, that you can relate to, would be a domestic violence situation. And families interact differently in different cultures. And it takes a little bit of understanding, both to provide fair treatment to the defendant, to understand what the circumstances are, but also to understand what the victim's circumstances are. And even if you take the cultural differences out there in domestic violence situations, oftentimes you have victims who are hesitant to cooperate for a number of different reasons. So, it just, it takes a lot of time. And we, one of the things we pride ourselves in is we take all the time that it needs to make sure that regardless of where you come from, you have that same access to justice. And justice may be mean, you know, for the victim that the defendant is convicted or has consequences. And for the defendant, it may be that their consequences are lesser than you may have otherwise thought because of the circumstances once you learn more. So, anyway, so that ties into, that one example ties into all of these. Obviously, I was talking about equitable outcomes for people from different social, economic, and racial backgrounds. But by providing that level of service to everyone, no matter what your background, we're also helping to provide a safe and healthy vibrant community. By providing a safe and healthy and vibrant community, it provides groundwork for economic vitality and positioning Renton for the future. That next bullet there, the Supporting Plan Growth and Influencing Decisions. People won't want to live here and come here and start businesses and, you know, if they don't feel safe where they're at. So, it all ties together, as well as the last bullet of meeting customer service. And we don't have our own customers. The defendant or the victim or the witness are not per se customers. We don't serve them individually. We serve the public. But in providing high level of service and treating everyone equally, that's how we get to a quality customer service. And on the civil side, that's an internal customer service, where our clients are the different departments, the council and the mayor. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, I have this titled Emergencies Challenges. I should probably have had it titled Emerging Opportunities, if I was staying more positive. As we address COVID-19, there has been a very heavy focus on everyone in our department. Our jobs have changed significantly because of COVID-19. But on the legal issues, obviously, when you have a pandemic, there are novel issues that come up that we haven't addressed before. But when it extends this long, there are a lot of legal questions and a lot of new services that we need to provide or responding to other issues that come up. And those all relate to legal authority of the city to act and making sure that we have the right tools that we need to act. So, we're spending a lot of time addressing those issues. Forging intergovernmental relationships. This isn't necessarily COVID-19 related, but we're a very interconnected region. As challenges come up, we need to cooperate with our neighbors. So, in prosecution, we are attempting to increase our level of cooperation with our neighboring jurisdictions. One example, I think we've talked about in the past. As budget troubles come from COVID-19, we expect there to be more cuts with King County's, the number of cases that King County prosecutes. What's happened historically is they have declined to prosecute certain felony crimes, and those come back to the city, and the city prosecutes them as misdemeanor crimes. We are working regionally with other cities to try to cooperate with King County to minimize the impacts on cities when it makes its budgetary decisions. Those are issues to come, is why I have them as Emergencies, Emerging Challenges. And then managing backlogs. On the prosecution side particularly, we expect by the time we get back to in-person trials, we do not have in-person trials right now, we'll probably have about a year's worth of backlogs of trials of those defendants, which they have a right to insist upon going to trial rather than resolving a case through negotiation. So, that's going to be a lot of work that we're going to have to figure out how to handle as it comes. Once we get to that point, we're opening back into open court. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So, just real quickly, through our accomplishments, I mentioned budget savings. That is through staffing, it's keeping positions open when we had vacancies, but also our entire department participated in furloughs through the shared work program. I think we averaged close to 20% of time off during that several-week period that the whole city was participating through that program. We've also cut out or substantially reduced any discretionary spending. Very minimal training expenditures. Wherever we could, we've cut what we can to try to address the impacts of the COVID-19 budget. Transitioning, I can't say how proud I am. I can't convey it here. Our entire team just almost immediately working, teleworking seamlessly. And I'd say especially on the prosecution side to convert from a courtroom practice to a Zoom courtroom practice, just really took a lot of work, not only within our department, but also coordinating with the court, the public defenders, and the police department and everyone involved. It's just, it's amazing what we were able to do. Again, we cannot yet have jury trials, but we are continuing to negotiate cases, resolve cases, have motions. And I believe that we're now having bench trials even, so all by Zoom. So, it's pretty impressive. The last time we came to you, we added a Rule 9 internship program. We did have a very successful intern in 2019, in the summer of 2019. And that gentleman was able to go on and get a full-time job out of school. So, that was a success from that perspective. We did shelve it this year because it's really, it's hands-on courtroom experience. It really requires, it's a training program by us that helps train that person. So, it just didn't make sense to do when we were short a prosecutor and we were short an administrative staff person to try to do that when we were in virtual court. We hope to start it up again next summer, but that's, again, kind of dependent upon where we're at with regard to backlogs of work and hopefully back again in the courtroom. Go on to the next slide. So, again, we worked, this was discussed, I think, by Chief Ann Bailey about the community court, and you'll hear about it more from Bonnie when she gets her turn to discuss. There are a lot of work went into creating the outline of a potential community court program. I think from my perspective, the next step in that coordination was going to be really figuring out what resources, what impacts it had on our department. I won't speak for other departments, whether they would need additional resources. But we'd have to look at, you know, how that affects our need for staffing, depending on how it was set up. And with COVID-19, both the lack of in-person attendance at court, which would make a community court, which is designed to have all of the service providers there for defendants to be able to divert them literally from the prosecution side of things into these service providers. With our limited resources and being online, it's difficult to do right now. So, that's a future opportunity, I would say, although we have it here as an accomplishment for laying that groundwork. I already mentioned the successes that we've had in moving to a virtual hearing process and continuing to advise in the COVID-19 challenges that we're ongoing living through. And then we have here a successfully assisted with risk management. And just a reminder that in 2016, we moved away from WCIA controlling all of the litigation management when we received claims, to handling that internally through our decision to go self-insured. The number, the level of casework has grown over time because WCIA continued to handle cases that arose under, that the claim arose under in 2015 and earlier. So, now we're pretty much all post that period. So, all of the claims that we're handling are claims we're managing ourselves. That doesn't mean we're litigating in-house on all of them, but we're doing our best to minimize the cost of litigating externally when we can. For goals, some of the things we're planning on working on, again, continuing to work through the health crisis, managing the large backlog of work, and assisting in developing with the jury trial procedure. Right now, I think we're expecting that won't happen before the beginning of next year, the actual implementation. But we are continually working on how to go about doing it safely, hopefully in person. But possibly, I suppose, that could be done remotely as well. We'll see where we go on that. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, again, I would say that this and the body cams were mentioned in previous presentations. I would say that both the body cams and this are going to require at least some additional financing sources or reduction of other existing services. We are already working as efficiently as we can in most respects. So, to add additional workloads, you're either going to do everything less well, or you're going to have to cut out something else, I would say, as new work comes in. So, those are decisions that are yet to come when we're in a better position to move those forward. Again, reinstating the Rule 9 program, to the extent feasible with COVID and budget, to the extent that our funding is less than we hope it will be. I would say that that's probably the first program that I would cut from our budget if we have to. And then we'll continue to increase efficiencies through technology, productive representation of clients. We were only in the position to do remote work like we are now with court and otherwise because we've already gone largely all electronic with our prosecution team. And we're continuing to try to move everything electronic to electronic files for the civil team as well. And then we'll remain flexible and capable of redirecting resources as needed. And that's, I think, the name of the game for 2020. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Shane. Any questions, Councilmembers? I see none, Shane. I really appreciate you and all your staff. It has been a very tough year, but you guys have stepped up to the plate. So, thank you very much. And we will continue our presentations next week with deliberations. And, Councilmembers, if you have any questions during the week, please do not hesitate to email the department heads. And with that, if there are not more comments or questions from Councilmembers, we will answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.